On our regular agenda for next Monday is a public hearing, or excuse me, next Tuesday, public hearing consideration of permanent encroachment agreement between CMM Company LC for encroachment in the city right-of-way at 101 Valley Street Burlington.
I'm gonna show a couple maps here on the camera. Frank Miller Company is doing some work on their building down there on between Main Valley, Front and Market Street. They're currently working on the interior building between the two existing buildings and then they plan to construct their building adjacent to Main Street. Part of their requirements is an update, or upgraded, electrical transformer. Currently, the location is right at this corner here. I think once they construct their new building on the corner there, there are plans for a dock entrance into that building near this location and then there's some other requirements for a location for that transformer. So they've asked to locate that on the south side of their existing building there, 101 Market Street, or 101 Market Street, to encroach out into the city right-of-way. A couple different maps here. So this is the edge of the existing building with Market Street here on the south side. They want to build an electrical plant platform adjacent to the building and then pull out a transformer for their private electrical transformer, which would extend out approximately nine or 10 feet out into city right-of-way. Again, this is being relocated from the location circled here in red. There were some comments on the review of that. There's a 16-inch water main right along the edge of the curb. That Water Works commented they do not feel it's a good idea to get that close to the water main. I have about four or five different maps here, but in blue here is the 16-inch water main and the transformer would be very close to the edge of that if it were approved for an encroachment into city right-of-way. The sidewalk is fairly nonexistent in this location. I think when they rebuilt their sidewalk on the corner of Valley and Front Street, they allowed for stair access and handicap accessibility. Currently, with, when this was all reconstructed and based on the docks, the sidewalk essentially went away on that location. The other comment or concern was just placing an encroachment in city right-of-way when there may be room otherwise in their property, although not convenient, to place the electrical transformer. So there's a couple of comments raised through the review process. The platform would be similar elevation to the base floor of the building, which is one foot above the 500-foot flood level. It would contain the electrical transformer-associated electro- electrical cabinets as well as an emergency generator. Would extend approximately 19 feet to the south towards Market Street and 31 feet, six inches east-west, though not all that would be on city right-of-way, just the southern portion of that, because they do still have approximately 10 feet of private property adjacent to their building.
What does that do for traffic on Market Street?
It wouldn't actually get into the road right-of-way. It would stay on the backside of the curb. The other comment or question came up with the flood mitigation project that we're going to be talking about. It had been discussed on the south side of Market, a possible small barrier wall, but those plans haven't been fully fleshed out, so that was one other concern, was how that would impact that. Looking at it, it's not the desired or preferred location for it, but it potentially could have some impact down the road. So, so those are the, I guess, primary comments at this time, where the water main in that location, whether there'd be an acceptable location on their private property in lieu of going in city right-of-way and then just somewhat the unknown about a flood wall or the flow of traffic on Market Street.
So how much distance in is there between what they want and the road? Is there any?
Yeah. It's approximately four feet. Let's see on this map here.
From Harvest Street isn't very wide to begin.
The edge of the road is shown here in this line, the edge of the transformer, the platform would be, I guess, up here. It's approximately three to four feet.
And, and the water main, how much?
Water main runs approximately right on the curb line or just inside the curb line. With any encroachment, if there's any issue with city utilities or otherwise, our agreements all place responsibility on the encroacher, the one that has the permit. If anything has to be tore out, it'd be their cost to put it back in, but it's something they are aware of all the comments and still would like to go forward with it and understand the responsibility with that.
Well, that water line there, that's a serious deal, isn't it?
It, yeah, I mean, if something were to happen there, there could be a very large hole to get to that 16-inch water main.
But it wouldn't necessarily interfere with what they want to put there?
It wouldn't be directly over top, but if they had to get in there to work on it, it potentially could impact it, I guess. It's kind of the unknown as far as a working perspective, not from the line perspective.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Did you address those comments and ask if there was other alternatives on their property?
Yeah, I gave these, all these comments were forwarded to them. This is still their preferred location. They are going to be here Monday to kind of answer any questions as well. If there's any other questions before then, I can forward on so that they're prepared.
I guess maybe is that the bare minimum amount of space that they can have or that they're needing? It's like, that's it or nothing? Because maybe if it was less of an encroachment, maybe it'd be okay, but...
They've got a lot of parking lots identified to the west of that. I would rather them use their, that space than to use city right-of-way. So they're actually extending nine feet out into the, into the right-of-way, right?
Approximately, yeah. The right-of-way line's right near where this service pole is. I think it might be a foot past that, so about eight feet or so.
I think the reason they want to move it out of that parking lot is maybe they don't want semis to hit it. That's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, they're...
Because it is pretty, I mean, backing up a semi.
They do have plans for a couple truck docks and then a ramp up into it. And it would be, currently, I think it's right in this location, right where the back of that truck would be.
I see.
What else here, Councilman?
That's it for now. I'm good for now.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
No, I'm good for now.
Anything else, Eric?
Nope.
All right. The next item is a preliminary adoption for a second reading on ordinance rezoning a portion of 2,400 Sunnyside for a PUD for the Zizer's Arbor View Estates PUD. Councilwoman Wilson wasn't here last time. Do you have any questions?
I don't know what, but...
I can give a brief summary again. This is a request to rezone a portion of property north of Zizer's landscaping greenhouse there on Sunnyside Avenue. They rezoned their business to C1 a few years ago, but the backside remains as R1, single-family residential. They're asking to rezone that to include a PUD overlay to allow some zero-lot line development, townhouse or condo development on the south side of the PUD, up to 14 units that could have duplex condos on it. This is a preliminary concept plan. They still would have to go through the plating process. This hasn't been approved and isn't necessarily the final design, but is a concept option for them. The PUD would allow up to 14 attached units on the south side of the property directly adjacent to Zizer's property, so all these units would be adjacent to his own property. He does plan to put in a landscape buffer on the south side. The housing lot should be no less than 7,000 square feet for these duplex lots. Our typical lot size in an R1 district is 9,000 square feet. The combined lots would be four, at least 14,000 square feet, but each individual home would be on its own lot. It would have to be 7,000. Would allow zero setback in between the two homes, the attached homes, and then lot width for the housing would be a minimum of 50 feet. They show on generally 56 and a half feet width for these lots. Our minimum lot width in an R1 is 70 feet. When you look at both lots combined, it'd be over 110 feet, but, so this is, the PUD primarily addresses the southern portion of, or strip of housing or lots. The rest of the lots throughout the development would have to maintain the typical R1 standards for lot width and lot size. These lots are considerably larger in size than what our R1 standards are. Would have to maintain open space, have similar architectural appearance, and maintain stormwater management, and do have to go through the plating process. This is the first step in considering this, I guess, infill redevelopment is going through the rezoning to see if this would be allowed, and then if this is approved, they would be bringing forward a plat through the planning commission and city council at that point.
Did you guys have any concerns? I don't think so.
There was none, no comment from the audience either. Someone asked me, Eric, about when people come forward with a subdivision or a development like this, does the Water Works weigh in on, do they have enough capacity to handle the wet pressure?
Yeah, we, anytime we have a request like this, we send a review to all departments within the city, including Water Works, Alliant, MediaCom, Public Works, Fire Police. Every department in the city gets a copy of this once, when we get a, and we get all those comments back and compile them before they move forward to the planning commission stage, so...
Okay. That's what I thought, but I was... Yep. We haven't heard any negative comments from anybody, have we?
No, I, just as we get into the plating, just some questions as we always get with new subdivisions is the stormwater drainage or how that'll be played out. I know they had talked, you know, this is conceptual, about some stormwater detention somewhere in the subdivisions, and that will be, have to be addressed through the plating process. So that's typically on any infill site what the questions are, stormwater, and that's a requirement of the plating, so...
Okay.
Not necessarily the zoning, that just allows the use, and then even if this is approved, it doesn't mean they can just subdivide whatever they want, they still have to meet the stormwater requirements.
Okay. Okay.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, I would, I wouldn't have a problem if we wanted to waive and write the final reading on this so you can get into the plating process, and, but I would also like to say that, I hope before they present the plating process, that we can get started on the zero-lot line ordinance, because I'm not particularly in favor of waiving the zero-lot lines, but we're not certain whether it's gonna, whether it's gonna pass as an ordinance.
Yeah.
I, we'd be set in precedent by doing this, and I'd rather see us pass an ordinance first and, and make it legal from the very beginning.
Okay. I don't have a problem with waiving either, do you?
No.
I'm good.
Okay.
I got it.
Got it? Okay. And you noted that, Eric?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. We have a resolution approving the final plan of the Christine subdivision, which we have a preliminary plat approved, January, was it, Eric?
Yeah, yep. I'll show the aerial map to start. The property is located off of Gunnison Street, just north of Agency. This is kind of the hill-down Agency that comes back up, the former Dresser and sites to the east here, but at the top of Gunnison is the slot owned by Don and Christine Harder. It is zoned M1, light industrial, follows in with this light industrial district here and desired to subdivide it. Has previously approved through the preliminary plat process of the planning commission and so, city council to allow for lot development in this area. So subdividing seven lots, approximately an eighth of an acre, up to nearly half an acre in size to sell for light industrial, generally storage or office-type use.
The requirements require them to be on a hard surface, et cetera, et cetera. Questions, Council?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, good. All right, here we go. Resolution accepting design for phase five of the riverfront flood mitigation process.
Thank you very much. My name's Leo Foley, I'm with Veenstra and Kim, representing Veenstra and Kim and our partner, which is Smith Group JJR. So just so everybody remembers, Veenstra and Kim is more in the engineering and design. Smith Group JJR is kind of the master planner, so a lot of the stuff you're going to see tonight is, is the master plan type thing. What we were, what we're hoping to do is to come back to you and basically say, last, you know, when we got the grant for the flood mitigation, we had put together a master plan, and we put it together in 90 days. Our first task was, let's relook at that master plan, make sure we get down to the detail, get a steering committee that steers us through that, so that when we go to design, everybody knows what they're going to get in design. Look at the phases and everything. So we've been, we've been hard at work at that. Steering committee represented today, Matt Nicky, is here. We've, we've, we've got a lot of input from them, we've got input from the public, the planning commission, general stakeholders, so let me just whip through and, and kind of tell you what, what we're after here. This is the first slide, it shows two, the pictures are kind of important on this one. What we're showing is, at the bottom of the page, a history slide, so it shows, it basically shows the history of what it was. And then the, the one to the right, of course, is maybe a couple of years ago when you were having steamboat days, and it basically shows what the riverfront in that area looks like. So what we'd like to talk about is coordination, how we got to the master plan, introduction of our detailed design, and that's something you haven't seen. What are our next steps, schedules, how does that work? And then the, kind of a nice master plan thing that they've got done is a 3D flyover. A lot of what you'll see here is going to be in that 3D flyover, but they took snippets so we can, we can kind of talk and see, see what these things are. So this where we did confirmation of the schematic design master plan, and so we can advance to phase five design. We've already started with a lot of the detailed design, but not the plans that would go out for construction documents. That's going to be done this summer, design development to get to there. Hopefully by the fall, we have final plans. By the winter, we can start permitting. You know, you, we've already had meetings with the DOT, I'm sorry, the IDNR and the Corps of Engineers, but really, until you get a bid set that they can look at, they really don't want to spend a lot of time. So, and the winter is when we're really going to hit them hard with, here's what we've got, and you'll see a lot of that today. July 2017, right after steamboat days, we start. And this is a picture, just an overview picture, that kind of shows what the riverfront could look like as part of the master plan, and this is a bird's eye view. I've got about an hour's worth of slides that I'm going to try, I was told get through in 30 minutes, and when the city manager tells me to get through in 30 minutes, I'm going to work hard to get through in 30 minutes. So that's what this one is. The next one kind of shows you get a little bit more detail. It shows the plaza out in front of the Veterans Memorial. The plaza, as you can see, parking and things like that in that plaza with the cars just in there for scale. There'll be bollards that'll set it off so it can be used for different things. The bollards help direct traffic through, that, and that kind of define what that space looks like. One thing I wanted to show you too, you see the red patterns there. What we, what we're trying to do there is we're picking up the main streets and kind of showing a red pattern out to the river, and you'll see in another thing, to kind of bring people to the river, more or less. And this one shows a little bit different, looking behind the memorial, the memorial building, shows the dockage, kind of shows what we're going to do, the space where the wall's going to go up closer to the memorial there, not at the riverfront, so that's the only area you'll see that. This is looking at the stage, looking down onto the stage, also showing the water feature. Water feature meaning a, the, showing, showing the, the play area. So that's a, a little bit different. This is sitting on the stage, looking from the band stage out. The next one, again, showing the spray park, showing what that could look like. This spray, this spray area is a little bit different than the one you see now. This is one that, there's drains in there, and when it goes away, you can walk on it, there's no problem at all with it. This is more looking at your dockage, platforms, as I was talking about, the red areas leading out to the river, kind of little overlooks, more or less trying to draw attention and draw activity to the riverfront. Also, you'll start to see the boardwalk going through, kind of a bike trail boardwalk that's going all the way through there. Okay, again, trying to pick up from behind the port building, the building you'll see there that has the little grass roof on it, that's going to be like a bathroom-type thing, and we believe that those kind of things can be paid for using a big grant, so that's, we, we felt that was an important feature, to start to get some transient boating features up in that area. Trying to think of the other thing, you'll start to see how the landscape's changing to use walls and things like that. You'll see the, the river, I think this'll work. This, you start to see the river wall, which is 42 inches high. And that one, a little bit better to give you the size of some people walking through, kind of greening up the area, but there's still a lot of hard surface, as you can see.
That wall will extend how far south?
That wall is going to extend all the way to, basically, to almost a Market Street lift station. All right? And I'll show you that here in a minute.
That's 42 inches.
42 inches. With, with some gaps in it. You'll see gaps, for instance, there. I'm trying to think if there's a better one. You can see that, see here where there's a gap in it. There's gaps for walkways and things like that, but 42 inches for the most part everywhere. Okay, and again, this is looking behind the port building, just showing the dockages, the river, the, the, the river wall, and then the flood wall. Now, we've, we've done some engineering work, the city did a great job of finding all the old plans and design memos for the river wall, and we found out we can use a lot of the sheet piling and things like that that are used there. It goes down, I think, 15 feet, there's dead men tiebacks that go in, so our structural engineers were just very happy, which meant, meant we could, we could probably put our wall right on top of there and, and stay in our budget.
Good. That's interesting, Eric. Good.
And again, just kind of showing what it would look like with the little walls that people would be able to sit on, the decorative nature. This one, again, when we worked with the steamboats committees, they were very concerned about trees. So here you're going to see, it's kind of funny, we got, there's not enough shade, but we were worried about trees. So what we're thinking of is high canopy trees that you can look under, and we've showed other places they do it, and I think the steamboat committee was, was very happy once we started showing what we had in mind with those type of trees. And this is kind of to get a feel, when you're right down in on the, in on the site, what size things are, and this is all to scale, so you can see what that would be. Again, these are kind of these trellises leading from the boardwalk, or from the, the dockages back up into, into the community. And we think tying the community and the riverfront together were really important. Okay. I want to go back to one more. This one shows also some of the shade structures that we had, and for instance, up at the, up where the band, the band, the bandstands are, it shows some of these permanent, permanent shade structures, and it's part of that, too, is stuff that I know you built during the, during steamboat days, that maybe we can incorporate some of that. Okay, so this one, what we're trying to get to here is what, we, you're, you're looking at a very refined consensus plan, and all the dots show areas where there were difficulties and problems and things we needed to work through. So for instance, far left, you're going to see there, if, we need to refine that south, that south boat ramp. It does not, those boat ramps don't operate very, very well, the parking lot doesn't work very well, so we need to redo that. You'll also see, in this area, there used to be two boat ramps, or three boat ramps. Those boat ramps now are gone in that, in this plan, and we thought if we refine these and make them better and more workable and more dockage, then that would work. Also, you're seeing in here that, that we didn't show a pump house, that there has to be a fairly large pump house, at least 20 by 20, maybe larger, we're in that process right now, that needs to sit, and it needs to sit on the north side of the Market Street box in order for us to make this thing work right. So that's another, another issue. They wanted the splash pad, we had it moved in here, they wanted it moved to a more central You'll see here the stage became a big, big issue. How do we refine the stage to kind of make it more workable with the whole site? And you're going to see that. Building additions we didn't show, things, redesign of the north boat ranch, and we did some studies to look at all that, because we got a lot of, sometimes we got different feedback, positive, negative, on the same issue. So we're going to go, I'll show you some of those studies now. This again is just a site plan that just shows May 18th, what we had, kind of we're moving it forward, and then I wanted to show you, at this point, some of our studies. So the south boat launch refinements became pretty critical, that if we're going to do anything with taking away boat ramps, we have to make the existing ones work a lot better. And that was told to us a number of times. So the, the picture on the right kind of shows what we had in mind, and I, I think that got a lot of people interested. The, the band, the bandstand and the speaker towers you see there, we thought we could pick those up and try to use that type of thing in other areas. We, we realized that the stage, the height of the, the stage is very important, and we got a lot of input from the people that get the bands in of what, what happened. This is a confinement, the one on the left is one the planners seemed to like, with a stair, these large steps. These aren't small steps, these are large steps where you can sit on and things like that. The steamboat committee didn't like some of that because they had heard that that was a area that the performers did not want, they don't like that. So then we thought about on the one on the right, a cover that would be able to put on there, so you leave it like that, and when steamboat days, you cover it on the right. It still wasn't really that, that well-accepted, so we, we did a couple more versions to see what, what would happen, and the one on the right and the bottom seemed to kind of win out as, as the way we thought could, could satisfy the most amount of people. And what that is, is these big stair things on either side, but leave the front open like that, and everybody seemed to think that would, that would make a lot of sense. And, and what it does is it makes that stage a lot more usable all year round, so it's not just usable at certain times. This is just showing the canopies during, during steamboat events, what the canopies look like, and then the one on the left is something that could be more of a permanent structure. And... And it, and then down at the bottom, we're kind of showing you other ones that JJR has done, very similar type things. It incorporates shade, it kind of gets your year-round usage, it might even be able to coordinate with the steamboat days and, uh, make it so it's a win-win financially. So if you did it, because I think they spend quite a bit of money trying to do that every year. So that was something we talked about with stage camping. The other one, this, this got a lot of discussion, ice rink research, and the reason that became important is every, the two of, two of the more important things people talked about was some kind of a spray ground. And then when you have a spray ground, the answer is can you do anything with it in the wintertime? So discussions, there are a lot of different discussions that came up about can you make kind of a hole in the ground, you know, a depression, and that you could fill it with water and make a simple, simple skating rink? But what we found is that climates like this and the people that really do it as experts say, you're gonna, you're, you're really gonna struggle doing that, the temperatures aren't right. So then they went through on these things here, you have to have a level site, you gotta have power, you gotta have hot water, you gotta have electric, you gotta have mats. And what we finally figured out is that the people that do this as a temporary thing, they come in and do it during a year, and the ones at the top left show that, they'll charge you about three hundred thousand dollars to buy that, which seems very expensive.
Yes, very expensive.
So what most people do is they'll rent it, and they might rent it for a season, and you can do a whole setup and everything for like eighty thousand dollars, and, and somebody might, we might be able to find a grant, and see how popular it is. But that's the one that almost every community is going to, they're going to more of a temporary than a permanent type thing, because it, you know, you start thinking about it, you get ice in there, and we have melting periods, we, we just don't have the consistent temperatures that would, would let that work. So this is an, an idea, we haven't passed on the idea, but we, we, I guess our feelings are that the temporary might be a better solution in the long run. The north boat ran, boat launch has come up numerous times, um, and the north boat launch right now is very well used, a lot of people, we had public meetings that basically say, don't touch it, don't touch it, you don't have to dredge it very often, it works very well, um, we like that north launch just the way it is. Well, so that's how we decided to stay. But then the steering committee said, no, there are issues, and they liked the, the plan on the right where you angled them, which to be honest is much better circulation, it would help, but it's not a, it's not a priority. So what we kind of said is, for the master plan, for the vision of the master plan, we probably leave the one in the right on as more of a, an altered north boat ramp. It's not funded right now, it's not part of the flood mitigation monies, but it probably would make more sense in the long run. You'll see a little, kind of like a little building out in here that they, they could use for certain things, and we just think that it would be a, a better situation in, in the longest part of the year. Okay, things that, um, things here that you, with the flood wall, um, we've shown what the flood wall could look like, you're not seeing there, um, you're not seeing your, what your flood might look like, but the precedence in the bottom right, what that shows is very, very similar, forty-two inch wall with something on top of it, and that's what this one down here is showing. We're starting to look at the type of wall, where you would put these type of things that, that would mimic something like this. You don't have to have those in, and I'll show you some, some pictures here in a minute, but you definitely, if you don't put the pilaster in here, then you have to make a thicker base down below, because you're gonna be building something during a flood, and we'll show you what that looks like. Colors, patterns still really haven't been selected, we're just showing you what it could look like here. And that's what this one shows, it shows paving patterns, um, what does a, what, what things can be defined with colors and patterns and those type of things. Okay, this particular one, now we're talking about the phase, now we're getting down from a master plan to what are you gonna do, you have four different phases, phase five starts, what, what are we gonna do during phase five? Because phase five, you have about five million dollars, only eight hundred and fifty thousand of that five million is for site restoration. What the state of Iowa does, they're paying for your flood protection. They're saying the site restoration, you know, we'll do part of it, but they, they're gonna want you to find other monies, and that's understandable, we've understood that all along. But for plans and specs, we have to say, what are we gonna do with the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And this is the kind of things that we're, we're really working hard on right now, is what the initial investments can pay for, pavements, lawns, trees, lighting, uh, overlooks and railings, um, what, what's probably gonna be missing? The splash play feature's gonna have to come somewhere else, we're gonna have to look for monies for that. These big shade structures, even though they're nice, they're expensive, and they're probably not gonna be paid for with flood mitigation monies. Um, the seating walls, all of those won't be in there. And then any building additions and decks probably won't be included with that eight hundred and fifty. This area right here, it's showing the area that's gonna be basically torn up, so that when we do the flood protection project, you're gonna be tearing in, tearing a lot of this up to build what we need to build. And so what's gonna get put back? Um, part, partially the, the, um, the pavement for the, the trail that would go through there can be put in there, these overlooks could be put in there, of course, the wall is in red, and that will be in there. But some of the stuff you saw kind of behind the, the port building, the deck that was on this side that kind of lets you see out, that won't be involved, and I've got a very nice little fly through that'll show you, so, so some of the stuff that you should pay attention to is like the deck on the side, the, what this will look like over in here. Trying to get through where we're, so, so where are we at, like, in the big picture from the design? Survey, we went ahead and surveyed all the phases, so we've got four phases, that, that survey's complete. We did the geotech on everything, so everywhere we think we're gonna have pump stations, everywhere we're gonna have gate closures, we went ahead and did the geotech. And we needed to do that for a number of different reasons. We needed to figure out if we could use your river wall and how we can use your river wall, and that geotechnical, um, report is just getting, or, I'm sorry, the geotechnical part of that is done, the structural part is underway right now, and that's a big effort. What do our foundations have to look like? Where we pulled the, the wall back behind the, um, uh, the veterans memorial, what is that gonna look like, uh, from a geotech perspective? Because we, we've got big foundations, right next to that, we're gonna have a pump station that's probably gonna go down thirty feet, so all that has to be tied together. Storm sewer, pump station sizing, preliminary design, we're not gonna do full design under this, you're gonna be, have to have temporary pumping for a while, but we wanted to know what the size is, because we needed to know what's the size of the building, where's the building gonna be located and what's the size in order to get through this phase? The wall alignment, horizontal and vertical, I think we're there on that now, but it's kind of from my perspective, because I'm a hydraulics flood guy, um, here we've got a, kind of a riverfront restoration, that almost has to be, we have to figure out what we wanna do in the long term before we figure out exactly where that alignment is and exactly how it is. So we feel like we're right on that right now, and that's why we wanted to come back to you and say, does everybody agree with this? If they do, we can go forward and start to really put the design, design together. Operations plan, how do we operate, for instance, during a flood, you're not gonna have pumps, but you're gonna have a wall, you're gonna have, um, a temporary wall or a removable wall, where do you store it? What's it take, how long's it take to put it up? If you don't put intermediate posts, how much does that add to it? So that's the kind of studies that I'm in the middle of right now, and I'll show you a few of the, this picture here shows, this is a, a couple of pictures, and, and the reason I'm showing this is Davenport Stadium is, I'm very familiar with these guys that do this all the time, and so I've talked to them a lot about how do they build, like, for instance, this wall here? How do they build it? In Davenport, they, they, they surround three sides of their stadium with almost exact kind of system you've got. They do a lot of half-wall, like that type of thing, they do a lot of full-wall, like that. Essentially, what yours is gonna be is very similar. Takes them two days, ten hour days, eight people per, per shift to put that up. That's now, and they put it up, it seems like almost every year, and they're not supposed to, but they do. They told me that it used to take them like a week and a half to put it up, but they've gotten a lot better, they put it on a semi, they use two forklifts, and they know exactly what they're doing. What they told me is these posts, and that's what we've been talking about here, he said you basically need a, at least one, maybe two forklifts to get those in place and make it work right, and he said if you wanna go fast. And so they use two forklifts, one to bring it out, one to help set it, and they go get another one, and, and because they've got a lot of that kind of wall. So that's the kind of the, the plan, we haven't finished on saying where are the posts gonna be, where aren't they gonna be, but that's all in the discussion. Your staff has been very helpful in what they could do and couldn't do, um, you, you, somebody asked about, um, see-through-the-wall, how, how, how many places are we gonna have? Well, they don't want a whole lot of big areas to see through the wall, because they know they have to build a lot more flood protection all the time. The other thing is we, there's two major suppliers of this removable flood, one's in Germany, one's in the United States, they're basically competitors, um, but one thing they don't do is they don't always like that you only wanna put two or three panels up. They like you to put the whole thing together so they can lock it down in place, but we've gotten them to change that just recently on a number of different projects, so now they're starting to do a design where you could put like two panels in and then lock them in place. And that's what I think for you guys, because you're gonna have a forty-two inch wall, that's real important, because the city might not wanna put it all the way up, they might wanna put two panels up and let it sit, they can come back. Okay, what's the next things? We wanted to have the work session tonight, then we wanted to, to, to go and, uh, have a steering committee meeting sometime in mid-August where we start to really get down to colors, selections, what does the patterns look like, stuff that would go into the design detail, not pictures anymore, down to what are we gonna tell a contractor to build? And then, uh, we wanted in, in, we're thinking in late August to have the meeting with the, with the regulatory. And, uh, this design, an initial design regulatory meeting, I'm thinking of a meeting at the Corps of Engineers where you bring the Corps people in, and it does two things, it, it shows them how exciting the project is, there's a number of areas we've gotta get permits for from the Corps, mostly where the, the pumps go through, they wanna know details, anywhere that you're putting that wall out into the water, they want a permit for all that, and they wanna know how deep are you going, what's the foundation gonna look, how much filler are you using? And until you can give them that information, they're not too interested. But we are thinking of that first kind of big meeting in late August, and then have the plans and specs, as I said before, in the fall, um, so that maybe in the winter we could start, um, approvals, approvals and bidding. Now what I'd like to do, before I take any questions, I'd like you to guys, because I kind of spun through that real fast, I'd like you to look at this fly through, fly over, and you can kind of see, we'll go through it maybe a couple of times, and you can kind of see, and this is kind of the bird's eye view, a bird flying through, and looking at what it would look like, or what it could look like. This is looking under the canopy. Those are the stage, big steps we had talked about. The building over here is more of a building that would be used by the port. And then a deck off the back that's kind of facing more to the river though. So all of this paving in here, we think we can do with phase, the first phase. Now you come back up to the area, I told you they'll have the bollards, flags in the memorial. The black or dark building off to the right is where the pump station would be, and that's what that's showing. That little bump out is just an area people thought kind of bring the river to people. That's the flyover. Quick, quick, uh, few other things about, just in general, funding. We, we also know, there's certain places we know we can get funding. For instance, uh, the city's doing a very large sewer separation project. We can do what's called a green infrastructure project, so for instance, that, that area right in front of the memorial, we are thinking drainable pavements that drains down to a subsystem that collects stormwater, kind of cleans the stormwater, slows it down before it gets to our pump station. That can be funded with what they call their, their sponsored project. We figure you're gonna have about a half a million dollars worth of that kind of funding. We talked to the state about it, we actually have a telecon with them tomorrow, um, to discuss, can we use that, that sponsored money? And that's basically money of interest that you have to pay to an SRF loan that you could use for yourself, you could use for your project, so that's about a half a million dollars. We know the boating infrastructure grant does a lot of boat ramps, boat dockages, um, docks, and that we've, Clinton, Dubuque, we've been very successful. I've, I've talked to the, um, the DNR runs it, it's a U.S. Fish and Wildlife program, we've talked to the DNR, and there appears that there's not very much competition in the state of Iowa for those right now. On the Mississippi River, this project will, it will be gleaming high on their priority list. Then, you only get so much money, you get like, I wanna say a couple hundred thousand dollars for the statewide, but then you, once you get the statewide, then you can compete nationwide, now the competition's stiffer, but we've been successful nationwide in Clinton and Dubuque, I don't see any reason we can't be successful here, then you're talking a million and a half, two, two million dollars. So the monies, it, a lot of money's needed, but we, we feel like we've got some pretty good chances to start getting the money. You gotta have the plan, the plan has to fit together, everybody has to understand it, flood mitigation is the name of the game, but the restoration is, um, is gonna be sold by the community's support and what goes on. With that, I'd like questions.
Looking at the forty-two inch wall.
Yes, sir.
Looking at our recent flood history, we would usually always have to put the things up above there, or would they, the forty-two inch wall?
We think, I, I don't like to use this term, because I can get in trouble, um, a forty-two inch wall puts you at about the hundred-year flood level, which means theoretically you shouldn't be using that wall very often. Now, although what the Corps will say is hundred years is not a very good term, you should go hundred plus, the Corps of Engineers would say plus three feet. So your wall is gonna be at the five hundred year plus a couple of feet, and that wall, the, the design of the top of that wall was based on the two thousand eight flood, and they said, okay, if the river, if it didn't break on the other side of the river, and we add another foot, so that's up there pretty high. We don't think you should have to use it all the time. With that said, you, you might, so it's, it's gonna be designed to take that kind of flood, but with, with that forty-two inch wall, and you guys can tell me, that's about the height of your fence, how often has the flow come over the top of that fence? I, I'm, I'm betting, um, you know, thirty, thirty, forty years, the last thirty, forty years, it's probably happened a couple of times.
Thank you.
But there will be gaps, we have to put.
Gaps where I showed the one in Davenport, where you put it all the way up.
Yeah.
And if you can make those gaps, like a twenty-foot log, for instance, then it's really easy, you put a post on either side, you slip the twenty, if you make it forty foot, now you gotta put a post in the middle.
Right.
And it's really, it's not that big of a deal to put the post in, it's more the foundations, you gotta have that foundation right, so it's, a lot of flood mitigation is done under the ground, not above the ground. So that, that part right there is still being discussed. I think between the, um, port building and, uh, the memorial. I think between the, um, port building and, uh, the memorial, I think people were saying they'd like to see less posts. Other than like the trellises going through, we can make those trellis, everything we do, we're going to make it incorporate. You know what I'm saying? Um, but, but then as you get behind the buildings and stuff, I'd like to see a lot more lighting and things like that that incorporate putting those, putting the flood, flood protection in. But I think what we'd like to do is, is, is kind of get the council's approval so we can go forward. The things that we want to do is we want to really start saying, uh, we want to pursue other funding sources for the master plan. That's one of the main things we want to, want to start doing is pursuing these, that the city has a master plan in place. And we want to pursue tho, those things.
What exactly is it that, that we're approving? Just the basic design thing, but not every little piece that goes in there?
You're, you're, yeah, when I saw that, it said you were approving the phase five plans. And I was a little nervous, I thought if they start asking me for plans, I'm in big trouble here tonight. Um, what, what I thought you were approving is the concept of the master plan, the concept of what we're doing. What we're going to come back to you with is plans and specifications. So we'll come back to you with plans and specs before we bid.
Okay.
Way before we bid.
Because there's some things in there that.
No, I, I understand.
Are not flying for me, so.
Nope, and, and, and we'd appreciate any of that input, you know, as far as what, what you think, um, you know. Matt, right here, Matt's been very vocal about certain things that we thought should, he should change or we should change. And he'll say one thing, and somebody in the steering committee will say just the opposite. So we've been back and forth a lot, and we're not done in by any means. And, uh, so, so we're, we're willing to listen to any.
Right, it's kind of important, so if there, if you've got input, um, you know, definitely if we can discuss that so then when we go back and have our next meeting, uh, it can be brought up. All these details, we've got what, probably sixty hours of work in this just as a committee. Um, and they've all been thrown around, uh, we've looked at all the pros, all the cons, everything from parking to changing the north boat ramp. Uh, we had a lot of vocal people on both of those issues. Uh, basically, we looked at all the information, uh, from very far away, uh, and then also looked at it very narrowly. Uh, just so we could kind of make the arguments for and against. And then ultimately, as a committee, we decided to go with the way that we went, uh, as far as the design goes. So, uh, if you, like I said, if you've got things, uh, that you'd like to see changed, it's important that we recognize those, uh, so that we can try to tweak them, uh, so that it would get through council.
You know, the overall design thing, I don't have a problem with. It's just little thing, little, little things like that ice rink, I think that is just not a go for me. I, I just don't see how that.
So from the steering committee's point of view, what we were trying to do is find something that would activate the space in the winter. Uh, draw a crowd in the winter. We like the idea, the overall, the, the original concept was is if we could flood the flash, uh, the splash pad.
Yeah.
Uh, put some kind of barrier around that and then freeze it. Um, then we could let kind of Mother Nature control the temperature, and then we would have something that would be relatively inexpensive. Um, that would then have that draw. After they did all the engineering studies behind it, they realized that the way our weather's going to work with the concrete and the plumbing necessary, it wasn't going to be feasible. So the, then we moved on to the step of, okay, it's eighty thousand dollars, try this out. Can we make enough money off of people coming and using it? One of the things that, uh, a lot of people, and it's been discussed on the committee, is having a city Christmas tree. Where we could kind of, uh, centralize a lot of what we do at Christmas time in this area and use that as another draw. You're probably not going to make money on it. Is it something that we could look at doing possibly? But we'll never know unless we give it a shot, if it's, if it's financially feasible.
I guess my point is, we're, we're not sitting here making those types of decisions right now. We're just saying, okay, in, in general, we think this will work.
We created the plan with the idea that someday we may want to give that a shot. Uh, which is why, you know, like I said, we've basically created a spot for it to go. Is it something we have to do in the plan? Absolutely not.
Yeah, okay, thanks, man.
Thank you.
Yep.
But that is something, like, right now, all this discussion about these little things are something good for you to take back to your next meeting.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, when we designed it, we did it with everything in mind, steel days and that, just because once you start to tear stuff up, put stuff back, you only get one shot. Otherwise, if you want to change in the future, it'll cost you more money, so.
How, um, I was just thinking about the vandalism of the current water features that are down there. So how, how would those work, the, the new water features?
Um, I, I, I.
I mean, like, how are, are those pretty?
I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what happens with your current, your current ones. But I, but I realize there are problems with water features. What I've been told is almost everybody has a splash pad right now. Almost every city you go to, that's the big thing. And they tell me the advancements in this is tremendous. So what, what JJR, and they're the ones that are the experts on that, they, they went and looked at that and said, oh no, that's not what we're going to do. So theirs is going to be, um, much different than that. You'll be up, and, and I know that, that has a lot of the same features you're seeing. Colored lights come out of them, the water to come out of them. But I think they can, they're, they're much, uh, much more durable. And when you shut them off, you can walk on them, you could, they tell me you can drive on them. So I, I think the newer designs are much better, but I will, that, that's something that when, when we come forward, we have to, we have to look forward. That's not part of the next phase five.
Right, right.
And, and a nice, when I said I'm going to be coming back to you with the phase five fa, plans, that has to fit into details of what's going to happen in the future. Where's the electric going to go? Where's the water going to go? What we're going to, what we were telling you today is that site's going to be pretty flat. We're not going to, Matt, Matt had mentioned that first we had talked about putting like walls around a little area. Well, that's not what we have planned right now, because if we were going to do that, we'd have to change some of the stuff.
And I know we're going to get questions about, well, how much parking are you going to have there? How much, how many vehicles can park in that area?
We knew that was going to come up. We know that's coming up.
So I'm here for that. If you want me to do this in an hour, we can wait. So just to initially finish up on the vandalism, you know, anything you do in public space has the potential to be vandalized. Uh, I mean Burlington's got a lot of great citizens, so we kind of hope that that's not going to take place. The idea that, we're not fools, so we do know that that is possible. But, uh, that's why we've got a great police chief and awesome police department to try and help prevent some of that stuff. Um, as far as the parking goes, um, overall, you're not really losing that many spaces. You're just kind of displacing it, moving it around a little bit. If you, I'm sure you all are familiar with the parking survey. Uh, we determined, uh, and we looked at that in, in a lot of depth, especially in the first couple of meetings. We determined that if we just move some things around and maximize some of our space, especially the, the truck trailer parking in the boating areas, um, that, uh, we're making it much more efficient. Um, and because I think the average, uh, number of parking stalls that are used on a daily basis in the north boat ramp area, it's only something like ten percent.
Right.
So what we're basically doing is maximizing those areas. People are going to have to walk a little bit. We have heard some, uh, some people make statements that, um, you know, some of the elderly people in town or some of the handicapped people in town may not have as mu, much accessibility to the area. We've identified some of those. I mean, there's almost a hundred parking spaces in the place between where you enter to the auditorium and the place where you would exit near the port. Um, there's a hundred spaces there. There's, I think there's only what, two hundred and forty spaces in the entire lot? And you're actually gaining almost a hundred spaces in the south lot by redesigning it and removing this, the other boat ramps. So around the auditorium itself, you're not really losing a whole lot. You're just kind of moving some things around and maximizing it. So it was something that we looked at very heavily. Um, the area on the west side of the auditorium still has the access where you could pull up and let people out and park. Uh, and then we've also added the space in the north. So there's two areas now that would allow for people to be able to come, gain access to the auditorium or to the space between the port and the auditorium, and then be able to park their vehicles. And then obviously you would prioritize parking for handicapped or, or elderly people, uh, in those spaces that are closer to the. So, yes, good comment, but we did look at that in, in a lot of depth.
See nothing to worry about.
I, I have a question about the larger dock. I don't remember seeing that in the plan. Obviously, it was in here in May, but, um, is that a public? I mean, I, you see a, a boat parked there now, but will that be all public do, docking?
Right, so, um, the dock itself, I believe when we looked at the numbers, was about four hundred foot long, it's twenty foot wide. Uh, it would be permanent, so it would be year round. We wouldn't have any costs associated with needing to remove that dock on an annual basis like we do the permanent visitors' docks. Um, one thing the committee really liked about that is it provides the potential for perhaps a touring boat to come through on a more frequent basis. Uh, it also makes it a lot more inviting from the river. That was one of the aspects that we looked at from the, from the committee's point of view is Burlington, how does it look from Burlington? But then how, more importantly, how does it look from people that are going by Burlington, uh, via water? So, um, that was one of the things we looked at. Yes, it would be accessible to the public. It also provides, once you start putting up a wall, you kind of eliminate some of the feeling of, that you're actually on the water. Um, this gives people the ability to go down, get right on the water, and then continue to walk the riverfront. Um, there would be perhaps opportunities for, uh, if people wanted to put up a popcorn stand down there, or there would be some, uh, benches. All kinds of opportunities. Those aren't things that are in the plan, but there are possibilities in the future.
So is this dock a part of, we're trying to get additional grants to get that in there? It's not part of the plans?
The one, the one I talked to was boating infrastructure, and, and that's something to note, is we're not always lined up perfect. Boating infrastructure grant is probably, before you get the big money for this dock, which I think you'll end up getting, you might be three or four years away. You're, you're probably going to get money next year to do the design of the dock, but then it'll take a, a few more years. But that, that's the kind of dock that, that they will like. Because what they want to say, it's just a question you asked, is if you say you're making that dock for one person or another, they're not happy. But if you say that dock's for general use and for transient boaters, anybody boating up and down the river that wants to come to Burlington, I'm a boater. I, I love it when I see docks like that. And I, you know, so that's, that's really what that's about.
It's also important to note that we're, we're still maintaining the visitor's dock separately. This isn't the visitor's dock. Uh, we still have a visitor's dock in the plan, uh, as we do today.
Good, uh, I would want to make certain that when you, when it comes to concept time, that, that we have the money in place before we proceed. And then the other thing is, uh, the, the things like the splash pad feature, we're, I'm going to have to know that it's going to be, um, minimal maintenance. And we're going to have to have some, I'm going to have to have some kind of proof of that. We put in two features on the riverfront, and they've been down more than they've been up. And we've had other problems with other fountains within the city, and that's, that's, um, we, that's one of the things that the city manager was concerned about too, was, was the ability to, to pay for these features that we're getting grant money for to continue the operation. And, uh.
That's a, that's a good point, and I'll get back to you guys, because I, I don't have the answers for you right now on, on splash pads. Other than I'm seeing them everywhere. But I don't, I don't know the answer to maintenance and what does it really take to, to you. So I, I'll, I will definitely check into that.
Well, I, there, there was a, there was a splash pad put in at a, at a redevelopment of a, a housing area. Was put in two years ago, and it's not working this year. So that's, that's why I'm saying that. I've got firsthand knowledge of it.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
And I also know that we've got, uh, a, a private individual that's going to be putting in, uh, a rather large splash pad in, into a, uh, facility that, that they own. And, uh, I really don't want to compete with them either, so.
Understand.
That's another thing we, we need to look at.
Yeah, because phase five doesn't have the splash pad, but the electrical and the water under the ground, we were thinking of to, to make it so that we don't have to tear things back out. That was our primary thing, but we need to, we'll work on that before we get back to you.
Okay.
We'll have to see what the public says. Will, will, is somebody going to be making a presentation next week at the public meeting on this, or?
This isn't a public hearing though. This is just a resolution accepting the design, so. Are you guys coming back next week?
We, we were not planning on it, but we certainly could. I mean, that's up to you guys. I, I certainly could do it.
But this isn't one where we're taking public comments yet or anything. That's, that'll be planning and design time.
That would be during, when we have plans.
Yeah.
We're going, we're going to let people get up and make comments on this if they show up.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And, uh, um, I, from, from, I've heard from a lot of folks, and there, there could be a fairly good turnout for this, so. And there may be nobody.
We've actually, when we went to the last planning meeting, we had pretty much a full house. Full house of people, so, and we, we got, I thought, tremendous comments.
From us, steering committee's point of view, uh, we've had a lot of people inquire and ask those same questions. It's just a matter of really explaining to them the numbers behind it. For example, the parking, when you start to see the numbers behind the design, uh, then it doesn't really seem so bad. But when you start, they just look at a picture and see an entire parking lot eliminated, and then they kind of don't understand. So it's just a matter of, you know, really making sure that they kind of get the numbers behind the plan, and then they feel a little more comfortable about it.
My point exactly.
So I'll be here, if you like.
Okay, good.
What's, uh, when, what's the next meeting?
Tuesday. Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
And basically, you want to talk, do you want me to go through the same? I don't, I'm just trying to get.
I, I, I would just think if you're here to answer questions.
Oh, I'd be glad to be here.
Yeah, just be here, because.
Maybe give, maybe that flyover.
Yeah.
A flyover would be nice, I think, yeah. Okay, that sounds great.
Sounds okay to you?
No, but it looks like I'm outnumbered. I mean, I, I would rather have a presentation. I, we're just, we're going to spend twenty-six million dollars, um, from this plan. I would like to have people see, see it upfront. I don't want to get halfway into it.
Do you want to do that this week, or would you rather have like a special public meeting for it? I mean, we've done both. Well, I, we'll do whatever you guys.
We do our business at council meetings.
Okay, great.
I, the more, more opportunity people have to see this and, and comment on, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with that.
Hey, we, it's, it hasn't been fifteen years that we had that entire parking lot tore up. And, and made, uh, uh, six million dollars in improvements down there. Now we're getting ready to tear them out and, and do it all over again. I, I, I want people to have a real opportunity to speak to it.
I'm okay with that. Fine. More information, the better.
So Tuesday, so next Tuesday.
Five thirty.
We'll come here, make a, make a shortened presentation with the flyover and take comments and questions.
That'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Matt.
It's Rinker, by the way. Not Rie, it's all right.
All right. Anything else, guys?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steph. Nuisance abatements are up, I see we have a Burlington logs and something different.
We've been using them for a while as well.
I haven't paid attention, I guess.
Yeah, we have multiple individuals we use based on availability.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments about that, guys? Folks?
Every time I see this list.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. All right, uh, this is on the consent agenda, resolution approving filing application for Iowa recreational trails program. For the Flint River Trail.
Actually, it's going to come off. We're thinking we'd have enough time to move forward with this, but based on the timing and then where we're at in the CIP, uh, Charlie looked into it a little bit more on Friday after it was already posted, and it's not going to work this year, so.
So we're dropping this one?
Yeah.
Okay. A resolution approving purchase of a chipper truck for parks.
This is in the CIP. It's budgeted at sixty-five thousand. Um, our current little bid was sixty-three thousand, eight sixty. This is a, a daily use truck, um, replacing a nineteen ninety-two Ford F seven hundred chipper truck. Um, used for tree removal, trimming, block pruning, uh, chips. It's one of our more essential trucks that we use for forestry and, um, is in the CIP for sixty-five thousand in FY seventeen, so.
You okay with that, council?
Yep.
Then on July eighteenth, we're going to have public hearings for a number of things, consideration sale of property at nine twenty-five Wells Court. Consideration of property at ten fourteen Court Street. Rezoning property at the end of Garden, Dell and Lawn from R two, from R one to R two. Uh, rezoning property at twenty-six thirty-five Mount Pleasant from C two to General, uh, to R four. And Ordens Vacating selling portion, Ordens Street, west of Bombardier, Bombardier located south of Minno. Those are public hearings on the eighteenth of July. Uh, two items on the discussion items, treasurer's report. Are you going to do that, Annette, again? I really appreciate you doing this on a periodic basis, by the way.
Okay, so May's report was in the packet. Um, I don't know if you guys have any real questions. Do, we look like we're in really good shape. I mean, we're going to be making all of our transfers in June, so some of the things, like if you look back in the sewer fund, we're going to be doing some transfers of some funds from one project to another. So those will all clear up. But overall, there's nothing that's out of the ordinary.
Good. That, that downtown facade thing is all taken care of then?
Um, we, we still have, I think, two.
Uh, one.
Is there just one now?
Hmm.
That hasn't completely paid off their portion yet, so.
Okay, that's good.
We'll have a little bit more coming in there.
That's good.
And then, you know, the normal things that are timing, like, you won't really know the true numbers for like our internal service funds for vehicle maintenance and, and stuff like that until after the end of the year.
Yep, okay. Questions, council? We're getting better shape all the time, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then last, thank you, Mr. Crown, then the twenty-eighty agreement with the airport. Ms. Beard.
Hello, I'm Mary Beard, Southeast Area Regional Airport Director, and we, we have revised a little bit of the twenty-eighty agreement as we talk about the armory property that went to our, our council and then the city's council, I'm hoping you might have a copy of that in front of you. Uh, we reviewed it as a board on Friday, and there was one, one comment, a couple comments that we just wanted to draw your attention to, and that is in section five point four, care and maintenance, where it really specifically talks about the armory building, and it says, "In the event the city and authority mutually agree that the existing armory building should be demolished." We had a little conversation about the mutually word in that, and, and we understand this is a, a partnership and a combined effort, but we also wanted to reiterate that it is very important, if we have an aeronautical use for that building to be removed, that we are able to do that. So that, that was just our concern, one little word in there could be taken a couple different ways, so, just wanted to bring that to your attention as we get closer to tying this agreement up and signing off on that.
Do you have a suggested wording, then, that you would like it to say instead of that?
Yeah, it, maybe it's just, "In the event the airport authority determines it necessary to remove the building for aeronautical use."
Yeah, that, that would make sense.
Something like that, so.
Yeah, that'd work.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Uh, I think it should be blown up right now.
[laughing]
I don't have a problem with that, but it's, that building is absolutely a disgrace, and that, it, uh, should be torn down sooner rather than later. Um, I'm just sorry we didn't have the National Guard take care of it when they were still in there, and then get rid of it. It's looking worse every day, and I, I told the council when we decided to accept that, that it was going to cost us, and it is, and we've got people cutting grass and, and clearing snow and, and, uh, working on those, uh, facilities all the time. But it is, uh, very handy for our contractors that are, uh, using it for cut trees and, and sewer work, so, it's, there's a blessing on one side and, uh, ugly mess on the other, but I don't have a problem with.
Great.
How soon can you make, how soon can you find a aeronautical reason for tearing it down?
I'll work on that, Tim.
Yeah.
I'll help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, someone has to change this, um, wording before Tuesday night's meeting, and so it shows up correctly, right?
It's, it wasn't on the agenda to be approved yet for Tuesday.
Oh, that's right.
I thought it, I thought it was, but I'm, I might be wrong, Jim's email to me made me believe it was to be approved, but is, did somebody want me to send that?
Discussion was, if everyone's in agreement, we can move it from discussion up to resolution.
Just, I think if you just put in there, "In the event the building should be demolished, the city and authority agree to pay fifty percent each." I don't, I don't know what we need to mutually agree.
Is Jim off this week, does, so I can just send that to you, Stephanie, and is that what you?
You mean the final one? You could send it, yeah.
Okay.
Copy Kathleen on it, too.
Great, thank you.
That'll work.
Who, who's prepared it? Your attorney?
Um, actually, our attorney did, and then it went to your attorney, so the fin- this final draft that's probably in front of you tonight was by your attorney.
So we are ready to approve it then, Tuesday?
Are you, council?
Sure.